I want to start first of all with what's happening in the Senate this past week. We had an opportunity to review the idea of expanding Medicaid. Medicaid expansion would be something that would be very beneficial for the state of Tennessee, not just because it would get healthcare to 700,000, approximately 700,000 Tennesseans, who are working Tennesseans by the way. They make too much money to get Medicare and they don't make enough to get help and support through the Tennessee marketplace. So these are people that are really vulnerable right now. They're vulnerable in terms of not getting their unemployment. Big issue for a lot of these people. And they've now opened up the doors for the Supreme Court in the state of Tennessee to start hearing eviction cases. If you live in a federally subsidized housing or you have a federally insured loan, you don't have to be worried about this. But for those people who are, many of them fall into the same category as those who cannot get access to Medicaid expansion, this is a critical and vulnerable time. We had a committee meeting in the Senate, which Becky Duncan-Massie is one of seven members of, and Jeff Yarborough, a Democrat from Nashville, introduced legislation to bring Medicaid expansion to those Tennesseans. In order for this to happen, he would present his bill and then it would have to be moved as a motion and then seconded. If you have anyone sitting in a chair in that committee who doesn't do either one of those things, they are telling you that their vote is no. So they might be giving lip service, but the reality is in order for it to move forward, it requires those two things to happen and neither of them happened dead in the committee before it even has an opportunity to hit the floor for debate. I also want to talk a little bit about education. One of the things that happened this particular week is in looking at the budget, we have the proposed budget from Governor Lee. And I wanted to give you a little enlightenment because some of this directly impacts our educational system on a number of levels. First of all, you need to know that this budget actually cuts $365 million out of the state budget when we have $400 billion in reserves. These budgets also put an unheard amount of $575 million into literally the untouchable rainy day fund. What's happening is that not only are we not using this rainy day fund, I don't know what we're waiting for beyond a huge social justice movement and pandemic to have true emergencies while people are still not getting their unemployment checks. And we're still trying to figure out what's the safe way to keep our economy alive without compromising the health of individuals. Basically, part of this budget would put an unprecedented $575 million more dollars into the rainy day fund, taking that fund to $1.5 billion by July of 2021. They call for two deposits, one of $325 million in the fiscal year 2020 and another of $250 million in the fiscal year of 2021. Still not clear what that budget's for, but there's money going in and it is causing compromises in other parts of the services that are so needed by our state. It also ignores something that's critical in terms of keeping money in the budget. And this is kind of a shell game as far as I'm concerned. There's $150 million that was included in the state's, what is now obsolete, the emergency and contingency fund. This was money that was set aside as a part of our economic recovery for the coronavirus relief fund. Guess what? They have that $150 for the health and contingency fund, which is in essence being paid back through the Federal Cares Act. They are sending $2.4 billion to Corona Relief Fund for just us here in the state of Tennessee. That money will then actually be given back to the budget in terms of that $150 million set aside. That money has not been reallocated and it's as if it just disappeared. There is more than $75 million in each fiscal year in the budget that could be reallocated or work in for some of our agencies where cuts are being made. And to just keep in mind that $2.4 billion that's being sent to us in the Cares Act by the federal government actually has to be spent by December 31st. That's money that we have to use and inject into supporting our people, our citizens, and our economies. The budget also takes out a loan to pay Amazon and Volkswagen $115 million in cash. These are cash grants of $65 million and $50 million to Amazon, which is a trillion-dollar company, and Volkswagen, a $100 billion company. The reality is that Amazon's been booming through this coronavirus and this is not a time that we need to be propping up that corporation. It's also important to be aware that they are trying to repeal a tax that is specifically geared towards people who have stocks that provide dividends. If you don't know what that is, if somebody invests in a company and that company makes a regular payout to say, here's some money, this is what we made, you own a little big piece of us and here's some profits we're going to share with you. If you make $1,250 or more a year in dividends and trust bond interest, you have to pay a 1% tax. This is something that really impacts very few people in our state. It's people that are in the top 10% of our state in terms of income and it's only 1% of those profits, but it can add up. As it turns out, they are trying to repeal even that, which does bring in education money. In fact, $148.1 million that was passed in March, which includes a 1.5% raise for teachers, down from 4%, which was originally promised to them. It eliminates that salary increase. However, the budget does include a 1.8% raise for Mr. Governor Bill Lee. $4,600 raise he gave to himself this year. For some people, that's enough to help sustain their ability to stay in their apartment or their home for an entire year. The budget also includes pay increases for state employee positions, the Attorney General, all state judges, the district attorney, public defenders, state troopers, and TWRA wildlife officers. When it comes to what's happening on the healthcare front, Governor Lee's eliminated funding a Ten Care program that would provide help in terms of healthcare for a mother and her child for the first 12 months after birth. Ten Care actually stated that the program was necessary to save mothers and children from preventable deaths, not illness deaths. That's been cut. We also have a $21.5 million cut that Governor Lee has eliminated for funding Ten Care Choices Program. That's geared specifically towards those disabled Tennesseans who want to live independent lives. Go on. $682,000, Governor Lee's asked for new therapists who would serve in Ten Care's Family and Child Crisis Division, a really, really important division under the circumstances of everything that's going on. In fact, this is creating a situation for people who are the most vulnerable to lose out in our state budget. We also have $41.9 million, which was previously allocated for the governor's ESA voucher program. Now, this is not the 40 million that was allocated to travel with the child from a public school into a private school. This is money that was allocated literally for overhead. That money is not going to be used, but we don't know where it's going. So that they're not telling us that little secret. But $41.9 million disappeared, but we don't know where it's being reinvested into the budget. And lastly, we have $1.5 million worth of funding for a program that regulates air pollution and it permits smaller polluters such as construction sites, small surface coating operations, and small printing operations. Last year, they actually, well, actually two years ago, they passed legislation that would allow medium-sized farms to not have to have a permit for dealing with their waste. This means that farms that produce 10 million tons a year of liquid and solid waste would not have to line their manure lagoons, nor would they have to put up any barriers to prevent flooding from heavy rains. When you take all of this into account, that plus what we were just now talking about in terms of air polluters and small construction companies, that pollution ends up in our water supply, which means we have to use more chemicals to break down those things. Basically, they're chlorine and bromine chemicals. And for the last five years, we have not been in compliance and in fact, our drinking water is testing higher for those pollutants than is allowed by the EPA. So we're in a situation right now where because of allowing these small corporations to be able to pollute our environment, air, water, groundwater, in order for them to get away with that, we have to use harsher chemicals affecting our population. And don't forget, last year, 14 of our schools had lead levels in their water system that were above the EPA allowable standards. We got a lot of work to do in the environment. All right, now, next, I'm excited to introduce you to, we have four county commission candidates with us today. I'm really excited and I got to tell you, honored to be in their company. These are people who are doing some very real work, grassroots work, creating policy, keeping themselves and their constituents conformed about what they want to do with the jobs that they hope you are going to put them into. And I certainly hope you do because I'm impressed by every single one of them. We're going to sit back and take a moment to just take a look at what they have to say to you about their districts.
Hello, my name is Dr. Deja Lundey and I would appreciate the opportunity to work with you and for you as your Nets County Commissioner, representing our home District One. Like you, I want to see us continue to grow, maintain, and sustain affordable housing, thriving businesses, and amazing schools. Our success will be based on us working together. I do believe we can achieve this because we are one.
My name is Courtney Duratt and I'm running for Knox County Commission for District Two. As county commissioner, I will use my training as a public school teacher to advocate for strong schools. I will use my familiarity as a fourth-generation North Knoxvilleian to ensure smart growth with effective infrastructure. I will use my experience leading my neighborhood and working with other organizations to empower neighbors. And I will use my time with the Tennessee State Senate and Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development to operate a proactive and transparent government. I aim to lead our community to become the best it can be, the best for everyone.
Hi, I'm Todd Promire and I'm running for Knox County Commission. During my career of public service as a lawyer and 20-year military veteran, I have always tried to be on the side of the little guy, of the people without a voice in the system. That's what I'm going to try and do as the Knox County Commissioner from District Four. I'm for reasonable and responsible development. I'm taking a stand against the influence of money in Knox County politics. I'll work to be your voice on the commission.
My name is Kimberly Peterson and I'm running for Knox County Commission for the fifth district. Growing up in a military family, I learned to value differences while finding common ground, a trait that will help me get things done. As a lifelong advocate, I served people in my nonprofit career, activists, and volunteer work. I will fight for adequate funding for all our schools. I will address flooding and traffic as we plan for smart growth and development. And I will ensure that you are always a part of this decision-making process. I look forward to working hard for you on Knox County Commission.
Oh my gosh, I'm so touched by that. I'm so proud of all of you guys. You're such beautiful human beings. Thank you for being on the planet and for being willing to put yourselves out there for your service and thank you for all the service you've obviously already given to us. We're going to start out with Deja Lundey. Hi, Deja, welcome. Deja, do you want to, yes, there you are. Thank you. It's great to see you.
Good to see you. I'm just now finishing work, so I got my scrubs on.
That's okay. Actually, it looks
Thank you for the invitation.
Yeah, you look very professional. You know, we all
I tried me.
So let's just jump right into this, Deja. I want to ask a question and then we're going to give Deja an opportunity to answer it and then we're going to open it up for the whole panel. At this stage of your campaign, what are you focusing on the most and why?
Oh, that's a tough question. Well, right now, just really informing people that we still have another election coming up and really just trying to sit back and really listen to the people because we are in a shift in the world, actually. But that's really impacting our community locally. So just really just trying to listen because the way we do business in this Nets season is going to be very different. So just really just trying to listen and see what the true needs of the people are. And I know that a lot of people are rising up and using their voices and it's an exciting time. So I just want to make sure I'm listening intentionally to make sure I can make the best decisions for my district and my constituents.
Oh, absolutely. So are you finding that there is any specific, well, I understand, so your focus is really on listening to your constituents right now. You want to hear what they want, what they value, what's important to them, so that you feel informed and being able to educate them, educate others, right?
Yeah, and it's all about equity. And I can see that more and more of the great divide, especially dealing with COVID and the technology divide and how our students are not in school right now and everybody, you know, cannot send their kids to private school because I know some of our private schools are still functioning and unfortunately, some of our students in Knox County schools are not in school. So it's a lot going on. It's a lot going on, so.
Yeah, well, thank you. Hey, Todd, you want to talk about this for you? What are you focusing on the most?
Yeah, hi, am I muted there? Okay, great. You know, I've been thinking about this and since last summer, I've kind of thought that the election 2020 was really important. And I felt like I needed to do more than just vote this year. And then now as events have unfolded, I really think this is maybe the most consequential election of my life. But it, you know, it's important for our purposes. November's hugely important, you know, the presidential race. But local elections are important and I'm in one of those. So what I'm trying to do, it's just the nuts and bolts, I think, of campaigning right now. The COVID, the pandemic has kind of altered how we can do things and not as much knocking on doors and more postcards and online texting, things like that. But at the end of the day, I think what lets Democrats win this year, both in August, you know, you're in a primary in August and then you'll have the general election. In November, we have our general election in August, is making sure that the voters come out. And so the most important thing, the thing that I'm focusing on the next 58 days, is let's get as many voters out as we can. And if we do that, then I think we can really make a difference for Knox County.
Yeah, thank you. That is so true, right? I know in our mayoral race for the, this past one, we just had, for the primaries, it was like, what, 5,000 people came out for the primary? So we got to be really, really active about making sure we're getting voter turnout for these primaries. I know for me, it's really impactful. If I don't win the primary, I'm not going to make it out of the gate to be able to make a really strong run against Becky Duncan-Massie. I think we can do it, like we really can. We're informed and motivated for sure. So thank you for that. So how about you, Kimberly? What are you thinking about the most right now? What are you focusing on?
I think much like my, you know, fellow candidates there is just getting the word out. I mean, one of the things about running as a Democrat in this area is that for so long we just have not had names on the ballot. So, you know, people who don't fall, you know, their theoretical or their political views don't fall in line with the party that seems to kind of dominate in this area for a long time. You know, a lot of them have sort of given up because they don't feel like they have choice. You know, we don't run a lot of independents. We don't run a lot of Democrats. And so, you know, just getting the word out that there is choice, a lot of choice, you know, this year. I mean, I am just so moved that at every level, not just local, you know, at state level, I mean, I believe since I've lived in this area, relocated back in 2000, I'm seeing more Democrats running than ever before. And that's just wonderful. So just getting the word out that, you know, our constituents have choice and that they don't have to accept the status quo is a real big focus of mine. And then again, you know, how do we move our campaign, all the traditional door-to-door canvassing, to other ways? And, you know, thank goodness for technology that we do have opportunities like this for voters to get to know us and, you know, phone banking. I'm doing a lot of phone banking, which is great because in particular with the time of quarantining, you know, everybody was kind of home and people were sort of desperate for contact. So, you know, I had a lot of really meaningful conversations during that time, so.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, Courtney, what are you focusing on right now?
I am actually getting out and going door-knocking here and there. I mean, it's not, I'm not covering everyone. It is a more concise list of people, but I am doing some door-knocking and I am actually finding it being well-received for the most part. I do don my mask when I go and, you know, it gets so sweaty and gross, but you know what? I'm doing what needs to be done to help with COVID and I'm just actually glad myself to be able to get out and talk to people. That is the main concern, is to making those for me, to make those personal connections. I am very much a face-to-face people person. And if I can't do that, which has been the case, then the next best thing for me is to make phone calls. And so I have been doing phone calls and really just door-knocking. Those are my main things. The old-school, you know, hit-the-ground running and that's what I think and hope will prove to be effective come, what did you say, Todd, 58 days? Is that right? Okay. So in 58 days, we'll find out if it worked or not.
I think, Todd, are you referring to July the 17th? Oh, well, I guess not. That's more than 58 days. That you're talking to the primary. Yeah, because
I'm talking election day, yeah.
Election, yeah. July the 17th is when people can start early voting. So really, the clock is ticking much earlier, right? Because people are going to be out voting before August the 6th. And for those people who are doing absentee ballots, so really, we got to make our impacts now, every day, right? Last week, three weeks ago, yeah. Before we go on, I want to just talk for a minute about what the county commission does. They oversee a large budget. It's much larger than the city's budget. It totals about $849 million a year. They have proposed in their new budget, which they haven't approved yet, a cut of about $4 million. Of that $849 million, 507 of that is directly allocated to the school board. So they have a huge influence in terms of being able to determine money that is going to the school board and are able to make some modifications in terms of what they require in terms of their spending. Of course, they can always change that. They also oversee the sheriff's budget, but they do approve it and the health department's budget. Those do not come from the county commission, but they are part of their job is to oversee those budgets and to approve those. We'll probably get an opportunity to talk to you guys about that in a few minutes. They also oversee things like zoning issue, the beer board, and oversee cable TV. But one of the things that we see that's very important is their relationship with the school board. And so I'm sure some of you will probably be addressing that specifically as we work through into our next question. Courtney, this question is, we're going to have you start out. And the question is, has George Floyd's death and the Black Lives Matter movement had any impact on your campaign? And if so, how?
It has. And like I said, so I've been going door-to-door. So I have been able to have those conversations face-to-face with people. And I've noticed that before his death, the conversation was very much about development and that sort of thing within our district. But now I'm seeing a shift and I'm seeing more of a focus on the systemic racism and how can we do something about it? And it's time to listen and that sort of thing. So it has affected my campaign in that our conversations are changing. And you know, it's, what we're finding is that it's time to celebrate humanity. You know, it's time to celebrate the diversity of our community and our education and professions and our cultures and everything that makes up our great community and just humanity in general. And so in doing that, it has brought the need for reform to the forefront of government and very much so on the local level. We got to make sure we are listening and we are acting. It's time to stop talking about doing something and get out and do it. And that is what I am seeing, hearing from constituents and that's how it has actually changed my approach to my campaign. Yes, I want to get out there and reform. I wanted to do that anyway, but now it is like number one, making sure these reforms happen, not just talk about it, let's do it. And I'm getting some support from that, from constituents and from people I'm talking to on the phone and meeting in person. And so that, not saying that I wasn't going to do that already, but now, I mean, it is right there. It is number one. It is ready to go.
Beautiful. Thank you, Courtney, for your passion. Okay, I'm back. Sorry about that, y'all. Kimberly, how has George Floyd's death affected your campaign and the Black Lives Matter movement? Excuse me.
Well, I, gosh, where do I begin? I'm kind of perturbed a little bit. You know, this is something that personally, as an advocate and activist in the community that I have been working on for a number of years. So the Knox County Democratic Party, the Progressive Action Committee, of which I'm a member, started looking back after an incident in 2017 of how we could start addressing issues of reform in our community. You know, I think as a candidate, you know, aside from an advocate and just a human being, as a candidate, when we hear that a large group of our community, a large cross-section of our community does not feel safe as candidates and as elected officials and as representatives in government, we have to hear that. And it's not the first time that it's been said. Like I said, this is ongoing work that's been happening in our area. I became involved in about 2018. And so, you know, the Knox County Democratic Party in particular spent a lot of time really, and it's a coalition, a coalition of activists, a coalition of community members, concerned citizens, that came up with a very detailed, it's 17 pages, very specific recommendations for the city and, you know, we need to extend that over to the county. And so, you know, it was sort of a continuation of the work that I had been doing for a number of years again, you know, something that gets such nationwide attention, of course, brings it to the forefront again. And I am just really excited about the really excited about the opportunity, you know, out of tragedy, I mean, absolute tragedy, that we can use that opportunity to really rebuild something that's going to be so much better for, for our community. And, you know, again, like I said, to, to hear that such a, a large group of our, our community is, is feeling unsafe, is feeling, you know, like they're not being protected, that they're not being heard. You know, that it's the responsible thing to do as a public servant, to hear that and to try to figure out ways that we can make public safety equitable for everyone. And so, like I said, you know, specifically, you know, it, it's just an extension of what I've been doing for a little while. And, and I'm glad to see such big support of this. And again, you know, I, I think that we need, there's been a lot of, of work that's being done in the city. I'm really encouraged by that. I'm seeing the city mayor, you know, meet, you know, Deja was a part of a, a panel yesterday that I tuned in on. And I'm not seeing that coming out of the county. And that concerns me because we have a Knox County Sheriff's Office, we have a county mayor, and, you know, it's not being addressed. And, and I think to say that it, with anything in life, I mean, as an individual, as a system, to say there's no room for growth, there's no room for improvement, there's no room to evaluate and see areas which we can, you know, do it better, is really dangerous. So, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we need to keep putting the pressure on to extend that sort of, you know, community pressure and also to encourage our Knox County Sheriff's Department and our Knox County Mayor to, to evaluate how can we better serve the community in this capacity.
Yeah, thank you. Deja, can you comment a little bit? She referred to something that you were doing yesterday. I'm assuming it was a, it was a Zoom event and a panel. Do you want to talk a little bit about what you guys were talking about and?
Sure. Yesterday, the Knoxville Renaissance hosted a, a panel about, inviting a lot of black leaders, talking about what the issues we have to deal with, living in Knoxville as a black person. And Mayor, Mayor Ken Cannon was there and some of her staff was there to really listen to us. I, I, I have to wait and see the action behind it because I hate that we had to lose George Floyd because there's plenty of people that we lost before. And, you know, living as a black person, we have been dealing with this before slavery, when slavery is abolished, that we have always been at the bottom of the pole. And I hope that, like Courtney said about, this is about humanity. I hope this is the time to change. And I know a lot of people have to go through their heart changes. I am willing to listen. I'm willing to work with anybody. I'm not here to call anybody racist, even if they are racist. But please note that we have to do something about creating, creating policies and making sure that there's equity in our communities, especially in the black communities, because it is a struggle, but especially our businesses to find funding. So that, that's a big issue because we have so many, so many creative people, so many creative entrepreneurs, and there's no place for a lot of them to thrive in Knoxville. And that's been an issue. And during my campaign, I always stated that we have a 42% poverty rate in our county. And that is so embarrassing. And that shows the heart of our government.
Yes. Well, I was just reading some information today about certain school districts are actually severing their ties with the police force. So schools, I don't know if people are aware, but a lot of schools actually have contracts with their local police force. And national data is showing us that you have, where schools have police forces, particularly on-site, you have an increase in arrests for students from the schools. And this disproportionately, of course, impacts black students. So this whole reformation is going to have an impact on our streets, but let's hope also in our school systems. As, and I want to know, and we are going to get to you, Todd, with this question. I'm curious to know if any of you are investigating, looking into toolkits in terms of having some predetermined ideas about how you would manage policing if that was to shift in a way that, like out of schools and turkey. I want to encourage you, if you're not anyway, to be looking at those things as leaders in our community. We have to have something to put into place if we're going to minimize the police forces. And we want to make sure that our citizens are well-equipped and prepared. So there's lots of good information out there and I hope you guys are exploring it. Todd, talk to me about how George Floyd's death and the Black Lives Matter movement has impacted your campaign.
Well, I mean, it's, so I'm just a middle-aged white guy and I don't really have a lot of personal experience with this kind of thing. And so what I've been trying to do in my campaign is, the best thing I can do is just listen and learn because I, I don't know what I, what kind of privilege I've grown up with. I don't have the experience that a George Floyd would have. So, I mean, I think the best thing that I do, listen and learn. But I, I will say that this brings to mind two things for me. First, as a retired lawyer, I look at that, that video and it's just disgusting. And I think if the officer there were not a police officer, there wouldn't have been any question but to immediately arrest him and charge him with murder. I think that that's murder, right? I mean, you go through the criminal process. I'm a lawyer. I believe in that, you know, that the officer has to get his defense, just as the prosecution has to be zealous. But, I mean, that, that was a murder. And it's, you know, it's, it's good that that thing, that incident is going to proceed through the criminal justice system. And then the other thing that it brings to mind is the reason that I'm in this race in the first place. I mean, there are a lot of little reasons, but I have an 18-year-old son and an 11-year-old stepdaughter. And, you know, I, I want to show, not just say, hey, you need to get involved, but show. And that's, that's why I'm doing this. I'm running for something, as the saying goes. And I've been very encouraged to see the protests and the diversity in the protests, black, white, Asian, young, old. And in talking to my son, he's quarantined with his mom in Virginia right now. He's expressed an interest in wanting to go out and get involved in the protests. And so, you know, win or lose this election, I, I kind of think I've won if he can see me doing this and think that that's something he ought to get involved with.
That's a, that's a powerful thing, right? Well, activists raise activists. And I can tell you personally, I've got a son in Philadelphia and one in Los Angeles, and they've been on the streets. And it's kind of like, oh, wow, yeah, of course they're out, you know? And you worry about them, but you want to, you, you know, the world needs their voices. So I hear you. And thank you for sharing that with us. County Commission is something that is important and intrinsic to be a bridge of sorts for our city and, and also our connection to our state levels. So I want you who are listening with us today to realize the importance of voting when it comes to your local elections. Lots of people are willing to just say that that's not that important and only the president matters. But the reality is that who is running your county commission and also your city elected officials and even your state, really, I, I think a state is being local, are going to have a, a huge impact on your day-to-day life, your children's lives, your community members' lives. And so I want to really encourage you to, to make sure that you get out there and vote for these candidates you have sitting here. Obviously, they're, they're giving you a lot of energy and time and amazing commitment. Now, our next question is going to go to Todd. Todd, can you give me an example of a specific policy or an issue that you plan to actually take with you once you are ready to move to the commission? And tell me how that looks different compared to what's happening right now?
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question. And before I move on to answering the question, your little segue, I think, was very important. When, when I look, and this is just for all the Democrats out there, when I look at 2016 compared to now, big turnout in March, big turnout in November, really big drop-off in August. Democrats can win in August if we come out in August. So it's very important that if you're a Democratic voter, come out and vote for the Democrats. Okay. Now that being said,
Thank you.
You know, so I, I look, I look at this question and, you know, I've got a platform, reasonable and responsible development, you know, I think, you know, I'm against money in politics. Well, I'd like to see the commission follow through on the Greenways program that they proposed earlier this year. But maybe the biggest thing, the biggest issue that we're facing is the decline in tax revenues, the, the budget issue, and how that intersects with schools, which I think is the most important issue that we have to deal with in Knox County. We all care about our kids. We all want them to get a good education. So where do we stand now? We stand with the school's budget having to be cut three or $4 million, I think it was. Likewise, for the Knox, Knox County budget. And we're sitting here with a mayor who is a libertarian, self-proclaimed, who has taken a pledge not to raise taxes. And I just wonder why, in, in a time that he has described as unprecedented, he presents a, what he calls pretty, not pretty budget, there is no consideration of increasing property taxes. So I go and look at that situation. And so one thing that a lot of people probably don't know is property tax rates have not gone up in 20 years. There's something called the Certified Tax Rate Law in Tennessee, which says that if your property values go up, you can't increase a local tax revenue based on that. So therefore, your property tax rate goes down. So 20 years ago, the property tax rate was $3.32 per $100 of assessed value. It now sits at $2.12. Another data point from, straight from the mayor's budget document is that one cent of property tax brings in $1.2 million in revenue. So I'm here, I think, and I'm going to take on as the issue that I take with me to the commission, if I'm so fortunate to be elected, that we ought to raise the property tax two cents. I am borrowing that a little bit from Elizabeth Warren. If you've followed her campaign, she had a two-cent plan. I think two cents is right. If you've got a, so that would take the property tax from $2.12 per $100 to $2.14. If you own a $200,000 home, that means your property tax is increased by $40. But what can that mean? Well, that can fill a lot, maybe all of the holes in the Knox County schools budget. I think that this should go directly to help the deficit that we saw in the Knox County schools budget. And Courtney can probably speak to this better than I. But one, one of the line items that they cut in the Knox County schools budget struck me was they were cutting $1 million from supplies and materials. And to me, that sounds like they're going to end up cutting books and paper and pencils and what have you. And that's going to be less going to the schools, which means that the parents are going to end up having to give more money or they're going to have to do more fundraisers or something is going to, you know, it's going to hit us in another way. You know, and I look at the mayor's ideology of no tax increase. And he gives us this budget that looks like it's shared sacrifice, right? I mean, we are genuinely facing a problem with tax revenues because of the sales tax fall off from the, from the stay-at-home orders. And so, sure, shared sacrifice cuts along, along the line on the budget, except I guess, property owners. Property owners must not be touched. And I think if I'm going to sit here and I'm going to weigh as a county commissioner, would I rather see a fully funded school system or would I rather some property owners have to pay $40 more a year? Then I'm going to err on the side of the school system. And I want our teachers to get paid and I want them to be fully funded. I mean, there, people are losing their jobs in this school system. They're going to eliminate some positions, as I understand, in this budget cut. So stop that. Don't do that. Two cents on property tax and let's, let's get the schools fully funded.
Thank you. Courtney, why don't you educate us about some of that, what he was referencing? I, I still want you to get to the question, but can you help us with a little more information about those cuts?
From, so from what I understand, the material, supplies and materials is a reference to the school itself. So that would be, say, copy paper for the school. It's not like for individual classrooms or individual teachers. It could also be textbooks. It could also be, I know for, I know a lot of the magnet program funding was, was a big part of those schools and supplies. And that went to, for example, with Beaumont, that went to things they use to help kids go on field trips and to help those kinds of extra, it's the extra stuff that really make projects and lessons and learning stick with kids. I mean, and so, and so that just means more that's going, because these teachers are still going to do it. Let's be honest here. They're still going to do it. It's going to come out of their pocket. Or it's going to come from, more from parents. But before they go that route, and, and I was the same way. I remember spending 120 bucks on a project for one day for my kids, but it worked. And that's all that matters. And if it, and if that's, I mean, that, that's what it essentially means, is we're not going to stop doing as teachers. We're not going to stop doing these things that make learning exciting and fun. We're just going to find a way to make it happen, whether it's out of our own pocket, which is nine times out of 10, what's going to happen. But yes, that does, Todd was, Todd was right. It is typically the, the, the budget, the supplies and materials for schools, not like pencils, because, you know, we all have those lists that we get to buy at the beginning of school that has pencils and crayons and glue sticks and all that. But it would include some extra stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Or things for the, for very specific things.
I'm, right now, just getting the idea that we need to get together again and really just talk about some of the school issues specifically. I'm finding all these questions are coming to my head and we can't take the time today because we're about to run out of time. We've still got to get through this, these questions. But, you know, maybe this is something we should be revisiting and talking about a little more. And as we're looking at putting together how we're going to get back into the system with our kids, I did see today that there has been the school board appointed, each school board member was able to appoint one individual from their communities to come together to create a consultant-type style committee to make recommendations about how we should roll back into reopening our schools. Unfortunately, there's not one teacher on that committee. There's not one physician on that committee. There's not one infectious disease research person on that committee. There's not one school administrator. It is been, it's very politically motivated and it has nothing to do with getting competent people coming together to create a plan to get our schools open. I am so upset about it. I just learned about it just a few minutes, came on air. I saw that were recommended and it made me so angry. I was seeing fire. We need to get competent people taking care of stuff and get the stupid partisan politics out of our system on every level. We've got politicians that were nominated, people that are running nominated to be on this committee. Don't know anything about, yeah. So it's an issue. All right. But now, Courtney, while we're on you, let's talk about what is a specific policy or issue that you have planned to take with you to your new job and how that compares to what's happening right now.
So I actually started my neighborhoods organization four years ago. We didn't have any kind of organization. We do live on, in a fairly high-traffic area. And really, I just wanted that sense of community and safety, just to know my neighbors. I want my kids to grow up with the neighborhood kids and that sort of thing. And so when we started that, I learned that the city has an officer liaison program for neighborhoods, meaning KP, we, as a, as an organized neighborhood that has filed with the city, just to say that we're organized, we got assigned a KPD officer. And that officer comes to all of our meetings and he gives us updates on crimes that are happening in the area. He is someone that we can give our concerns to. And he, so it's, it's really this bridge between law enforcement and the community. It creates that. It creates that, that community sense, that, that sense of safety, knowing that there is someone, we have a person of contact with the police department to air our, our concerns with. And so I would like to expand that to the county. We need something, especially in the wake of everything that is going on in the past few months. We need that trust. We need to bring that trust back into law enforcement. And I feel like by doing, by creating an officer liaison program with the sheriff's office, that we would be able to do that better because we would have this person that we trust, that is, we see very often, we see at our meetings, we see that, that they are in, working for our best interests. And then, in turn, people are more likely to communicate things that are happening. They are more likely to say, oh, I saw these people, and they were like taking pictures of somebody's shed, or, you know, those kinds of things. And it, like I said, it will create, hopefully, create that bridge between law enforcement and the community. And as far as I know, and I looked right before we started, I couldn't find anything like that with the sheriff's office right now.
Right. Deja, can you address that with, specifically? Let's look at your district where we see a lot more hostility against the, your constituents from the police force? And how this, what Courtney was just describing would, if, if it would even work in your community? Or how you might change that to be effective in District One?
Yeah, I, I love Courtney's idea with, you know, connecting the sheriff's department with the community. But I do believe in this town that we need a civilian oversight board, just like Park, that's in the city. We need that in the county, heads down with the, with the state that we are in right now. I don't think, I don't think it should be an argument or debate over it. It just needs to be done right now. Because we are not too far from having a George Floyd in Knoxville or Knox County. And I want people to know that. You know, we, we tend to ignore all the, the issues we have. We, we are very surface people. And we need to dig deeper and know that that can happen in Knox County. We need to avoid that situation now, and we do need a, a oversight board.
And can I follow up with that?
Yes, please.
Because I think, you know, one of the, the beauties of this is that if all of us are elected, you know, we may still be in the minority on county commission, but I think it's gonna be a very powerful force. And the thing that's so brilliant about this is that we're all echoing the same message. Because, you know, I know the question would come to me next, and, and that would be something that I would also ask for, is, is some sort of advisory board to be proactive, not reactive. And this also, you know, we are speaking, and rightfully so, about the black community. But I have also done work in, in a community that is, is not in the spotlight at this point, but has been, is our immigrant community. And we have very, very high tensions in our immigrant community, have had with the Knox County Sheriff's Department, with their 287G contract. What is perhaps most disturbing about this is what is contributing to the mistrust and the adversarial relationship between, you know, in the county, between the, the sheriff's office and the community, is that there's no conversation. There's no dialogue. There's no transparency. And I'll point specifically to the renewal of the 287G contract. You know, a few years ago, after they were first awarded that contract, there were public meetings. There was a public hearing.
Can you clarify for those people that are watching what the 287G contract is?
Sure, yes, I assumed. 287G is a federal contact, contract with the Department of Homeland Security. So basically, it sort of deputizes our local law enforcement to become acting agents, to do immigration enforcement. And there's only two counties in all of Tennessee that have this contract. Knoxville's one of them, and the Green, Green County, I believe, is the other one. Nashville had it, and it was so problematic, they did not renew it. But, you know, 287G was signed. And like I said, there were public meetings several years ago. I was a part of that public meeting, and it's actually a stipulation of the contract, is that you have to put the community on notice. You have to have public hearings with community input on this contract. And when it was done, the first year that the contract was out, there was a huge, huge community, I mean, we packed into, to that, that space in the city-county building. And after that, and, and, you know, tensions were high. There were a lot of passion, you know, a lot of feelings about that contract. And after that meeting, the next time that the contract came up for renewal, those meetings weren't held. And that contract has been signed now. I believe it's twice. It was just signed again. And the way that the public was made aware of that was a statement through the communications director. So basically, the public had no input on that. And Knox County Commission has no, no input, no say, no conversation, no dialogue about that because they don't do the actual funding, which I understand. But again, it, it's a program that is operated inside our county, and yet, local government, there's no, there's no dialogue. There's no conversation. It's sort of this unilateral decision that we will, we will continue this, we will renew this contract. And again, I think when you don't open up for public scrutiny, for questions, to give details, specifics, you're opening yourself up to really bad relationships with the community. And, and it's, you know, we've seen this, we just had a lawsuit where we had a, an activist in the community that was trying to get data about those arrests, you know, about the, the arrests that happened under 287G. And the, the information was just the records were not kept. That, you know, they were stalled, and it actually took Chancellor Weaver, you know, a chancellor to, in the circuit court, to actually rule on that, to, to release that information. So again, you know, that does not, that kind of way of conducting business does not foster open, you know, transparency and, and fostering good community relationships. It, by nature, it almost puts it in an adversarial position, and that's not what we need.
Yeah, and that's, and there's, there's, there's a couple of new, or a few new models coming out. It's very exciting to see that in some cities, they are completely defunding or, or firing their police force to start all over and create new approaches. So I think this is gonna be a grand social experiment. I'm looking forward to seeing lives saved and cooperative community and law enforcement relationships being built towards de-escalation training, being built towards truly serving and protecting individuals, and especially those that are most vulnerable. But there is so much repair that needs to be done right now in our black communities with policing that I'm very concerned this, as a solution for those communities. And Courtney, I don't know the demographics entirely of yours, but for black communities, there is such already a distrust that there's gonna have to be a lot more than just having a police officer show up at a home association meeting, you know, to heal that. And I'm sure Deja is gonna be a lot more even informed about that than I am. But Deja, I want to bring this question back to you of an example of a specific policy or an issue that you plan to take with you as you fill your seat in the county commission, and how that looks different than what's happening now.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes, of course, of course. Yeah, I'm, I'm curious to know if you have any specific policy or issues that you want to take with you to your job right away as a commissioner? And if so, how that looks different than what we have now?
I think that the, the part, the part issue was the Pacific Policy.
Oh, yes.
Needs to be done as soon as possible, you know. That, I think that, that, that is something I want to see, like within the first few months of me being on county commission.
So that's a big motivator for you.
Yeah.
My phone's talking to me. My phone's just check in every now and then and talk to me. Sorry about that, guys. All right, Kim, Kimberly, do you want to tell us about a specific policy or issue that you're thinking about? That you want to take that, and tell us how that would look different than what's happening now?
I think pretty much what I was saying, you know, earlier, I, I feel like I kind of covered it, you know.
Okay, so that's it?
Yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement about some sort of, you know, proactive community. Again, like I said, you know, oversight, most definitely, but let's be positive and proactive. You know, just, I just want to say quickly that I saw the other night on, on the news, a really good, it was an interview with a police officer in Savannah, Georgia, who talked about the approach to policing. And the way that training has happened is a warrior mindset, where we have a war on crime and a war on drugs. And, and that kind of mindset and that kind of language shapes how, how policing can be done in the community. And I think that obviously, with safety in mind, how do we reform that? And he suggested, I think what, the heart of what Courtney was getting at, and Deja and all of us is, is more of a community approach, you know. Let, let's, we have this problem in our community, which is safety. How do we address that together? You know, how do we address that? And that can come in the form of mental health professionals stepping in and all those wonderful things that people are talking about now. So I do hope that this conversation, you know, does do a shift in how we frame the approach to public safety. And again, with, you know, with, with officers in mind as well. Because, you know, I, I do understand the fear of going into dangerous situations and things like that. So, you know, with that also a factor, how can we prepare and do training better, the whole approach? And, and I think it can be done. It's, it's being done all over the country.
Thank you, thank you. I'm hopeful too. We're gonna wrap up this panel unless there's anything that any one of you might want to shout out to those that are watching, is anybody want to have anything, Todd, anything you want to add? Good. How about you, Deja?
I just want to say hi to everyone who's watching, and I appreciate your support. I know District One will rise up. I know it's our time. And I just want everyone to know that everyone's, belongs at the table. Your voice belongs at the table. It does not matter your race, your religion, any of your beliefs. Your voice is, is ready, is now. Just feel free to contact me anytime. Let's do this together. We are one.
Thank you. Anybody else? Courtney, you want to hit your, you're muted. Can't hear you. There we go, Courtney.
I want to echo Deja's sentiments that, you know, it is time. It's time for the community's voice. It is time for, you know, Knox County is very incredibly diverse. And it is time for its representatives to also be diverse. And so, you know, if you put the four of us together, Deja's a physical therapist. I'm a teacher. Todd is a retired military lawyer. And Kimberly is a community leader and a mom and caregiver of a special needs child. And I mean, what's more diverse than that? You know, we are the people that are living with the rest of the people. We are going through the same things that Knox County is going through in their daily lives. And it's time to have those people represent the voices of Knox County. And so get out and vote and make that happen.
Thank you, Courtney. All right, anybody else? Everybody good? Okay, beautiful. Thank you.
Oh, I just wanted to say.
Oh, yes, please, Kimberly.
Yeah, sorry. Just to follow up, I'll keep it short. But, you know, one of the things that we've talked about, you know, numerous times is trying to define what Knox County Commission does. We were talking about some of these different committees that Knox County Commissioners serve on. And I think that one of the things that, again, we all agreed upon was that there could be some work on, you know, really getting information out about what county commission does and who they, who they are, how, the ways that they can improve the quality of life, how you can reach, how you can be heard. So I think that all of us, you know, we, the good thing is, all of us as candidates, we've become friends, and we talk a lot, we kick a lot of policy around and kind of what our vision is. And we've all agreed upon the fact that we really want to improve transparency. We want to improve communication with the county commission. I think we've all committed to communicating with our constituents if we're on county commission. And so, you know, we don't just need a list of our meeting minutes. We need to make Zoom technology. We need to livestream those committee meetings. We need to have listening sessions. We need to, to come up, you know, with community agreements, a way that, that the community feels invested in some of the development and things like that. And all of us on this panel are all committed to really being of voice and amplifying the voices of the community. So, you know, we, again, we have an opportunity to transform county commission. We have an opportunity to really transform local government. So, you know, help us do that. You, you're tired of the status quo. You're, you're tired of the same issues being kicked down, that, you know, kicking the can down the road. This is your real opportunity to make a real positive change.
Yes, yes, thank you. Thank you for that. All right, so thank you all to my panel, Todd Froemeyer, Kimberly Peterson, Courtney Durrett, and Deja Lundey. Please look them up. If you're not following them now, it's, now's the time to start. They can use your support in the campaign. There's lots of ways to do that. You don't have to just spend money. There are other things that you can do. So I hope that you will find a way to focus in and connect with some of these campaigns. I also want to let you know that next week for District Shine, we're excited to have two guests from the Black Lives Matter community organizers, in fact, of that local chapter. We will have Constance Avery and David Haynes will be here with us next week. We're looking forward to having a conversation around the transformation, both here in Knoxville, Knox County, Tennessee, and at the national level. I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. So we hope that you're gonna join us again next week. We have now for you, if those of you who are still with us, Chris Blue did an amazing performance for us as a way for us to raise money for our campaign along with two other musicians, Sam Taylor and Matt Honkenen. And they have, one of the songs that they did for us is called "Change Is Gonna Come." And we have that concert available if you are interested for a $50 donation. Not only do you help the campaign, but we also are giving, writing a check to those musicians who've been out of work over the last period of time and unable to perform. We want to support in our actions in terms of having these conversations. We want to make sure that we're trying to help and support in our community directly. You can go to actblue.com, search for Jane George, and look for the ability to get our Chris Blue concert. It'll be available starting June the 26th for the entire weekend. You can have it, blast it. And maybe if you get out on your boat, or you're laying out in the sun on your deck, or you're having, making a nice dinner, it's a great show, and they put it together just for us. And so we'd love to have you both support them and our campaign. So right now, we'd like to give you a little sample. Thanks for being with us. We love you all so much. You mean everything. We're looking forward to serving you, and good night. Well, that wraps up this week's District Shine airing every Wednesday at 4 o'clock here on Facebook Live. We're looking forward to seeing you again next week. Thank you for sharing some time with us today. We are grateful for the candidates who joined us today, and a shout out to Chris Blue for that beautiful performance. We appreciate your support and hope to earn your vote. Let's do this together. Take care of yourselves and each other. Peace.